Ready Democracy, we talk to the Director General and Salon Roads Authority, Engineer Alfred Jalil Momodu, we go can't get updates on different road and bridge project where they don't do for ensure see the road is safe of the use of people. And this time I want to say good morning sir and welcome to the program, Engineer Alfred Jalil Momodu, Director General Salon Roads Authority.
Good morning Radio Democracy and good morning to the salon people.
Okay, so the Salon Roads Authority get the responsibility for develop, manage and maintain the national road network initially, those are the main objective now for ensure a safe, reliable and sustainable road network for enhance social economic development. How they don't they do this for ensure see they live up to the mandate, the resume could get in there. So we also now get different project and other initiative they will not they own, especially for keep the road safe. But for start this program proper, you can start from giving general update waiting on the app on that is Salon Roads Authority.
Right, so in line with the vision and mandate where you just described, for the last thirty years since the inception of Israeli Roads Authority, we don't follow that closely and year after year, time after time, we get us have involved in either developing new road projects or continue the existing one then. And then, you know, we develop a few pipeline ones in a way like go be futuristic, meaning after this, so at this point, I'll just give you a list of some of the one they were currently very seriously involving. For example, with the Nada Far Not, we do the road between Kabala Falaba to Limbaya, that's ongoing. Down, not the north east, we also work on the Makolo Junction to Kubolo Goulama Bridge, where they previously called the Mabang Bridge. In the east, we get a major road project there from Kailao to Quindu and then on to the Librian Guinea border. Now the ultimate objective there, the border they divided into two parts. The first part, they take it from Kailao to Boydu, twenty-five kilometers and we don't do more than half of that. We don't pave off to about fourteen kilometers of that and then at work, other works they go on, they go on very well. In fact, just this, just this Saturday, we've been doing a boy do with contractors who really express interest in the other section, where they take it from Boydu to Quindu to the Guinea border, that's Yenga, on to the Librian border, and I mean they call my path. We take them there for as a pre-bid side meeting, so it should not be long, physical works, active physical works goes started, that's in the east. Down at the south, we also currently involved in the Tikonko Junction, Batima to the Matrujung Road. And that's if it's divided into two, one contractor they taken from Matrujung, from Tikonko Junction on to Batima, the other contractor they taken from Batima on to Matru and it go on, at this point it go on very well. And then further south, we get this small section of the road where we don't do for a number of years, but instead, we proud for announce in a couple of months, then they go down the road from, it was from Bandajuma on to Pujon, where they connect that side. So in terms of we ongoing road projects, physical, it's like physical works that they go on, not they wanted it. But also, we did do a very major bridge, we've been collapsed some time ago, the Bumpa Bridge, Bumpeta Bay Bridge, where I mean, we make a whole lot of headlines. I mean, it will interest now follow on a goodie now and see what they go on the, we done done all the, the pair them, like, you know, then tinoki fever like a colon inside water, we don't don't the what they did, the abutment and outside the bridge, they can anchor, you know, on either side, but then on the day we do work on now, we really doing net breaking speed. That's if very soon it could be ready and then, then they create a lot of problem me and that, you know, in terms of connectivity, but we accomplished that only. We also they collaborate with Scarep, who they do four major bridge crossings, where initially now being a handful, very deadly day. And they wanted to say, they said don't progress very well. For example, the Matruyong, it don't actually finish, now actually it was now deep on with them. Getting myself don't advance very well, so get Manoa and Tompari, they not as advanced as they wanted it, but they said the progress, I mean remarkable. So, I mean, in terms of waiting to go on, on the development side, this one our major project set. But it also will be good for me, who also make let people they know say, like I say earlier on, we get the one then where we develop, like we call it pipeline projects. If that's why they don't exceed the pipeline project. For example, the road really come up from Cambia, that is north east, to go through Medina Junction, go Tompari and then go connect to Kamakwe, it's one hundred and five kilometers road, who they do with support from the Islamic Development Bank. Currently, excuse me, we do an advanced procurement, follow get the consultant, we can do the final design review. And you know, there were a small, small contracts, we can accommodate, for example, a financial audit and so forth and so on. So then they say they go on very well, we are also working in collaboration with the, with Jika, Islamic Development Bank, Badia, follow also get the road really come up from Blama, Corribundo, Sumuya, on to Tumaboom. And this now very, very important road, because we are the what feeds alone. Now, one of these major ways where it's going to be produced in this country, then they do a lot of immigration projects in there right now and only to enhance, then send it, enhance the social economy development, we talked about earlier, now if we get a perfect road really goodie. So we are also working on that, once together and they would anticipate say rice, you know, production go also increase. So, I mean, those are sort of the few ones who we get.
So engineer, I mean, in terms of the open update we already on in the new project and you want to do in the pipeline, one thing where the public can get confused now, the difference between SLR and SLRSA. Because they have get a certain amount of safety aspect likewise owner. Take releasing a view of them through, when are the difference between the two government institutions already on issue we get for those two?
Okay, so the SLR, the SLRSA and the SLR are sister organizations. Then they kind of complement each other in effort. The Israeli Roads Authority, now the engineering aspect of the road, who they do with studies on the roads or which side road for day, we design them, we construct them, we ensure see it fits standards them for, you know, routes generally. So when we don't done them, then this, the Israeli Road Safety Authority, then they take, take out from that point. Then they ensure see their roads, because we all are aware see, roads and do they are very good things, but they can also serve as a source for disaster, let me put it that way, when crashes they will call. So for make we limit same crashes and they follow bring sanity, now the usage of the road, that's why the Israeli Road Safety Authority they did. Then they ensure see in the first place, you will go inside motocar for drive on that road, you for be qualified. So, sorry, so if you forget a license, a valid license, when at then they vet you before they issue them. They also they ensure see where they driving on that road, we, when we don't do the road, we don't make some pattern, for example, a layby, who's not there for drop off and pick up and some section, we don't designate here, you know, for pack date probably because of the road in weight, you know, and other incoming traffic then they. So then they ensure see they monitor that one, they saw whoever they use the road, they use them appropriately. So now that's basically the functions that we will deserve.
All right, you just give a update, my colleague ask you about the difference between SLRSA and SLR. But in recent times, we don't get little bit of confusion, who are they carry out that particular exercise? Where are in, we see, they don't begin for broke, you know, people are really selling some of the right of way and that, who are actually they carry out this, this particular exercise?
So this now, I mean, exercise is spearheaded by the Israeli Road Authority. So when I be telling about the difference between we and them, then they deal with the road. We also get a responsibility for the road reserve, they really not bother with the road reserve. The road reserve done now, which would you know make or the right of way? We getting the carriageway from the center, you know, on both sides, the limits and the based on the road in class, the road in location, you know, and so forth and so on. But beyond that, you know, then carriage, who said the motocar they pass, who said designate for pedestrians, all that part can actually still they, we in mostly what they use for other utilities, for example, electricity, telecommunications, fiber optics, water, decinade. And principally also, they left them, I mean, like how the name imply road reserve. In a case where we want to future development, expansions, we just see what they, what they don't go on at the Wellington Mashaka Road, it was a two lane, single carriageway, now now a four lane, double carriage, you right? So that can see, it not be for them be possible if road reserve not be there. So that's why that part, that part they did. But back to your question, the Road Safety Authority, then now do the carriageway, who said motocar they pass and the immediate facility where they did the sidewalk, etc., etc., then they ensure see sanity now the, you know, now the, in terms of traffic, where they move on the road, now they have responsibility. But the current activity where they go on, who they remove people then from the right of way, now the Israeli Roads Authority carry on. And we carry on in collaboration with the Israeli police. That notwithstanding, we and the Road Safety Authority, like I've been stated earlier on, we are sister organizations. So we can collaborate on a lot of other issues. We can identify some problems, we can draw their attention there, they say can draw our attention, in some cases we can go jointly, but waiting to go on currently, now the Israeli Roads Authority and the spearhead.
All right, now, the, the issue of owner start this exercise, waiting lead to that, waiting lead to that particular exercise the owner start for.
So I think I don't leave on the premises, the part of the, this section of who they clap people, they already get the function. And we feel see, people within dinner then please there, then they hinder the effectiveness of the function with this part of the road, this road reserve, this right of way for staff. Then on one aspect, for example, we don't get situations, I mean, that's a classical one. Orange, I've yourself, for example, they want pass fiber optics there. Then they get lot of obstructions there, because some telegraphic people will be permanent structure there, to the point that they therefore put area, poles, they go for people, pass wire, where in many instances, you know, very secure, sticky for don't panam, we get them, trucking, we go out, offload, so you know, then they all destruct communication, vital communication in the country. So we feel see, as long as you do it inappropriately, you need for come out. But again, most importantly, it goes to the part of the safety of the road, right? We, we don't get instances who say pedestrians there, when of course, now they are the most vulnerable on the road, even if bicycle staff hit a pedestrian, the effect will be very, very, very significant, you know. So then people there, you see say who said for worker, now the sidewalks there, you know, what they make, people they can't occupy there, for their selfish reasons there, where they constrain the pedestrians, they forgo worker on the carriageway. And that unholy mix of pedestrians and motorists them, now in the result to all then crashes them. And that we feel see, you're not supposed to continue for go on. So as a result, we feel so forget rid of them people in there. But that not to the only reason. If you also look at, look at the scenery around with cities, Freetown, Bull, you know, all over the country as a matter of fact, you see say, then people there, they just don't bring some amount of ugliness to them place there, right? You go to other places, they see how organized and how neat they are, we capable for be like that, right? But everybody, you know, they, for, now you live in a firm, you know, and so forth and so on, they go occupy them places and they, and then they make the actual functions there, we didn't think they had the default, we know they affected. I will tell you another thing, most times over our drains there, we put slabs there, so that maintenance could be easy for we. And when they need, they don't construct over there slabs there, so we not able access them drainage there. So when rain don't come, for example, the place clog, we find very difficult, then they fed we, you know, follow, even go move them and move the slabs for clean properly. Then some of them will sit on there, then when they do their business there, so they go buy, check in by cartoon or go buy mattress box by cartoon, or even when they work around there, or turn up around there, when they don't open their box there, believe me, then they squeeze them into their whiples there, for make the three and the, the drains there. So it make all emphasis the ineffective, small remake, rose all of flood and we not deserve that.
So you talk about carriageway, one good one are, the how people don't build, aside the one who they put markets, the how people don't build, the issue about lanes and pavement, salon still get out, we look at how some people don't build longer with the structure up to the road path, anything like such still they exist?
So like I say, you know, for a very long time, we've been done, they agitate, we done they talk people. In fact, at every given opportunity, when any Israeli Roads Authority person there, they address the media or the public, at every given opportunity, we must make a point of duty for make we talk about the one the way they occupy, when illegally occupy the right of way and we always remind and say, you could be removed. So, I mean, this now something we don't start, we don't start in earnest, with all seriousness, we don't start a week and, you know, we sit down, well plan them, they carry on, whoever we fend in seven day, eventually go commodity.
So the issue about demolition, making sure that the roads are safe, not a new thing, we don't see different engineer them or Director General or Donka SLR, SLR, don't they do, going to the same initiative, but for let be sustain and continuity, don't be one serious challenge, in as much as you don't start. People go to wonder, oh, people don't get the ideas, say, but now first time no more, later then people add the comeback. What mechanism you put there, you'll be a different and people really see the result and essence of clearing the side of woods here.
So, the one they really think, so, oh, they will go back, they will stop this law, they will be disappointed. Because we don't look, we don't see them, we don't look at all the reasons they will be responsible for why we not able for continue them in the past and we don't change with strategies them. And clearly, for the last one month, we don't embark on this. I believe see, the sort of development, the sort of progress with people that I see, it quite different from given the same period, given the same intensity, we don't happen in the past. And I assure you say, this could succeed. For example, one of the strategies that we use, unlike when in the past, we just go out there, you know, they take them off the streets, this time around, we feel see, no, we not just go out there, attack every side. We, you know, we, we, like, group, start, because of Freetown, we don't start now, we group Freetown into different, different clusters. Then the first cycle of we operations, we only involve four major areas. One area, now from the Imat area, right down to the American Embassy area. Of course, there are no need for over emphasize, everybody we know how people they be misuse, they how they be messy. We also go on at the Spaluk area, and the reason why we go there, this are diplomatic enclaves there, right? And then we canna the King Hamer Road, down they say, you know, people they see, we don't even, when we don't install traffic signals, they're not effective, because something, by the time the motocar, they, they turn up and then the lights change, that person know they block you, not maybe it will pass, so people they pass, just like how they fit for pass. And the traffic signals are supposed to walk, there's also regulate traffic on the roads. And then we fourth area, inside this first circle, now the Parliament area, we've been go there last Friday, the arm where they go up, that Parliament and Model area, the arm where you go up towards the Parliament, now they go, we will see how that will be so unsightly, you know, from that circular intersection, they go up in the Parliament, you can't believe that that side in that to, you know, the House of Parliament they go. So we don't care that arm there, and now we turn out to this other part of Model. And then, the Hillside bypass route, for example, such a wonderful road, we don't make, you understand? In no time, people long go, go occupy, most of the places they, put sharks there, went there in every shape and form, where they bring lot of safety issues and of course even aesthetic issues.
All right, now, but then people there with the dinner that please see, they will tell you see, they not did it, just like that. Then they pay tax to Freetown City Council. So when I'm engaged Freetown City Council for know if them people there had to pay tax.
So, no, no need for engage Freetown City Council for tax or no tax. So this is the thing, if I get me house, now me get her, then you can't sit on inside me house illegally, no matter how legal, any other person in operation. For example, if Ministry of Health, they go for go human cleats, that's a legal thing, that's fine. But the fact remains that you are illegally in my house. So if I really for pull you there, I know they go to Ministry of Health, because they get right for can't give you vaccine, for Ministry of Health, I'm pulled, no, no, I don't have to.
So if then people are there and that illegally, why Freetown City Council they collect tax from them? Because this now the, the thing where they the point at?
I, I, so I think that's a question with Freetown City Council, we go direct to Freetown City Council, when you get an opportunity for me then dinner yeah. I don't know how for collect tax, I know about tax, now road and robot, waiting me know is, they not supposed for the day and we pull in there.
All right, continue for the with inside the program, in name now, Engineer Alfred Jalil Momodu, in are the Director General for the Salon Roads Authority, as we there, we talk about different road projects there and same way so some exercise, they will start this being tense.
The program they continue, still on the demolition, engineer, one thing we may co-present actually now the issue of taking them off. Is it about just taking them off the road, they later you see they take a rope pan or something for still put the market, where that still could obstruct movement of people or road safety?
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, please.
Okay, fine, so it's not only about removing them, so I tell you say the strategy this time around, it completely different. In fact, all of these areas we don't complete, we then monitor them, we ensure see we put a sustainability plan. And I've been mentioned earlier on, say, we are working with Israeli police. So firstly, we go remove them and then monitor, I mean, we don't, we don't do a few of, we don't monitor, we don't make a few observations. For example, go almost every day or two days, we go around for see what development really happened, follow know which will be, you know, the next step we take. For example, now the Imat area, it has been like a ninety-nine percent success, except for one man, where he goes to that junction, he say he change money, we not even one person where they change money there. I hope he go hear this or his friends go here, I made it tell her, we are coming for him. Maybe go open a bureau somewhere else, because when he go there with stool, he sit on there, then when really he carry umbrella, then he carry small table, that's when the situation they get worse.
So I don't even want that, because.
No, 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 so I'm coming, I'm coming to the King Hamer Road. So how they call it place, Spaluk also, it's a success. In fact, then also if we not get anybody, we do that kind thing there, so we are fine with that. King Hamer Road, now this so far, we get a challenge. Two days after we done, people they start for go with umbrella, we see people they go with them, oh look, then it's a corner, trap them, they put her around. We don't want them there, we don't talk with police. In fact, attempt at to also get a meeting for with the hierarchy of the police, we get a meeting with them. We they deploy people there and that, where as you they carry with your umbrella, saying no, not put on, go away. We not want that, then then eventually what we do is, we intend for beautify some of the areas there. We want put something that will be permanent, we go actually prevent people from coming there again. In some areas, we put clear signs there, you're not supposed for selling at this place. I mean, go, go now Abacha Street, go now Malamatomo Street, go sell there. We not go there in a society as I open me, me do most of me house, now shop at the meat. No, 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 we need, we need, we need for get residential areas, we need for get business areas and even businesses, we need for get the type of business that go now one area. Timber, for example, for heaven's sake, how you go go to sell timber right in front of the American Embassy? You get all of God rich, you get all of Waterloo and beyond, you not go put your timber there. They will for know when we want something, for example, I want timber, I for know which part of the town I for go. If I want charcoal, I for know which part I for go. But every sign at this place, as you know, open you do not, this person there they sell charcoal. As you know, claim what this here, you need this they sell for, you get pharmacy. I mean, it shouldn't be like that.
This being term, the kind way how plenty people can hold timber they have, so to make now aid or sit on inside Bafa for sell timber, now one way don't make you not need for ask. If street trading illegal at the country, their activity there, now one way don't they happen for long term now and this done they point finger upon the Freetown City Council. But the work we then done they do for tap street trading, for sake of all this point finger, we don't turn to the Freetown City Council and the concern where plenty salon people done they raise, make ready democracy look inside this issue for more waiting at the latest from citizen and the Freetown City Council. Gibrila Hassan says, now the head of Media and Crime Services at the Freetown City Council, it starts for talk to Radio Democracy, but waiting they done they do for tap the street trading. But why the Freetown City Council decide for clear then street term? Make the head of Media and Crime Services, Gibrila Hassan says, explain more.
This operation, not to the first in this, we be done start our way back, sometimes in twenty twenty-three. The idea or the initiative come from our ship, the mayor, the deputy mayor and that's of the chief administrator. We now, we decide for revamping back, for reinstituting back, where the Internal Affairs Ministry say support the idea, because they want for let we get a safer, a cleaner and healthy city, where every resident, where they within the municipality say go proud, say yes, they now the Freetown municipality.
Gibrila Hassan says, carry on say, they don't they work with different body them, for see said and clear all the streets them, where they named they now them plan, so that motocar and people go get free passage.
Metropolitan Police, the Sierra Union Police and SLRSA and also the Trader Merchants. And that's why even if you come, even on weekends, Saturday and Sunday, you de find out say, also you de meet officers them and they, now the streets depart from operation, the twenty-three streets, no streets reading and parking and then streets here, we de refer to them as illegal street reading. We totally prohibited from street reading within the Freetown municipality. It seemingly obvious that citizens of any country may need for live in a peaceful, comfort, convenient and healthy environment.
But for hearing from the trader them, on how they receive this clearing of streets, now the Freetown municipality, now this them it gets for sale.
For me as a Israeli citizen, I think say, clear the place, one and one, but they forget place for the, so they for no see they for go. If that place they don't prepare, they may all man go there for day, now they go use sell. Because where everybody start us all at the street, you know, they find. So as a Israeli, a lot help for, now we go for help the country, for all country, community. They go now a man in country, where they see main line like this, you know, no big markets, get sign for go buy, get sign for do all that things there. So now we help and make the country.
This is to answer, you know, it's right, because, who then it be, go for all man get tea. They be showing us streets for me they sell, so man now they be paying, in the case of food fee, now they do what, some woman then has seen the present. So where they not eat it, for they say me leave, for me not go, we are here not eat it. Now I'm not going there not eat it, it's not not go sign for sell, if you be then give you sign for sell, then go there they, you know, go come on, you then can not eat it. Men you like give you sign for sell.
They get plan for the people, they go be for the market, you understand, let them friend, where they strategize to them, at least. Let them know, because I see the council and the police, they where they own your market, they can't go to the city council. Where you go for, where you see the market, now city council, if you one pay another, two pay another, three pay another, then the person may be in business, man, you way he get, you know, get huge capital, so from there they get share now in the act. And the police, where they meet you, the name meet you are polite, the cow that brutal, where that band, like they can't band that like, they do different things they want, they not supposed to do. For me, that pin to the government, do I let them friend way, let them shut things down for the business people like.
Then together, also say, they need sign for sell, so that they say go come out to a street, because they say not glad, with the kind way our Freetown City Council can take the markets them for Radio Democracy, men are federal again at the report.
The program Good Morning Salon, they continue with the still look at issue we get for do it, street trading, who say some trader them, where they sell now model new road junction, don't call on government through the Salon Roads Authority and other institution them, not for broke, then shop portable, because they say now through them business here, they able take care of themselves and their family. For more on this, make we join the reporter, Fadella Edith Thornton.
This being term, Salon Road Authority with other institution them, be start for poor people and broke them property them, now the right of way area them. Who say them people here, not for build and do business, where some of their area they here, now Model New Road, Hill Station and other area them, for no waiting really happen, make I be go now Model New Road and talk to people. And I be first talk to the chairman for the Model Traders Union, Joseph Kanu, be get this for say.
I mean, I the leader and chairman of the Model New Road Traders. For we, I actually like not sound good, because now here with the hand we living and for take care of family, then if the SLR say the one for remove we here, honestly, it not sound good to we. I still remember in twenty twenty-three, they be write we a letter, we meet them, then we be get a random of understanding, where we then be asked, we say, let we stay back of the iron and we just always the work to that, we always stay back of the iron. We call them the advice, we say, no one for see that say, the footpath occupy or they block the footpath. And when you look at a place, who say where they do business, always the footpath is always open, we never interfere in the air of the footpath side.
Joseph Kanu be continue for explain how it go affect them if they broke their shop them.
This, it not, it not sound good for we traders, so we they call on the mayor, so that it not go occur. Because looking at the present situation, like I say earlier, is that some of we now here with the hand we living.
From the chairman, I be talk to some market woman them, but waiting they make up of the decision where Salon Road Authority don't take, for broke structure then at the roadside them, and at this then be get for say.
It not easy for we, we worry, we stress, we say easy for we now like, they just call emergency SLR say, they they can't broke, no notice we, and we don't there more than twenty years, or man twenty-five years, if you watch, we not in a footpath. And the same SLR, they be tell we say, more change the table, not they beautify the city, more put in mental and container there, all of a sudden now they can't tell we say for come out, no notice we. We the, baby governments, who no way expected broke safe, because now they, the beaucoup people is collapse. Where SLR say, then I will come to serve the hospital, the mere factor they can make the attempt, beaucoup man collapse, so my way see where the place right, today some man no well, because it is shock to we.
Who be don't work car, can give you okay for clean now container. Say this my road, like me, I don't be doing selling now, ninety-eight-five, they broke container, they can't pull you so no more, one ten, one ten. What we do, and then pull the road, the seller make out of the road, the left road. If you don't make a good container then, they say for can't pull on one ten, one ten. No more for beg twenty, no more, for let them sorry for we, we are for good and happy. What's who don't keep where now the road, people they pass, and people there now the hill they know, and all, I ask who now they be do, can buy market. So person not here we go now, so, go you can do, you have the the seller for the market, see from here, get here, where the seller where, organize now who they front here. We can do, you have the the seller for the market, see from here, get here, where the seller were ah, for the nation, who they front here. So, pass who beg no more Papa government, start them sorry for me, we ah, we let me, so past that here, what they not disturb here, look who is not so it so. We ah, the Papa government sorry for me, let them know we now.
Them market woman here, end up calling government, not for broke their shop or table them, because through them business, they able for take care of themselves and their family. For the Society for Radio Democracy, me now Fanela Edith Thornton, the report.
And we de come, now studio, so we can bring in my studio guest, as to the radio democracy, they look at the work of Salon Roads Authority in terms of waiting at the mandate, road project and other things, with Indian engineer Alfred Jali, I'm Mamodu Director General, before go for the break, listen to concern of people in the city, we get um issue on the demolition, and also we get a one we get for the city council. But first, from thank you, then you know the difference between on a your own demolition or clearing of the roads with that of city council?
Eh, I read the people, they say city council, they say then they remove traders. Eh, we all know say, along the rules, we see people in the holds, most small tin and matches box then, that I made, string government at the hand then. So probably, now they want it, they see the council, they remove, and it could be within then, you know, mandate. But we, what you do, would I go host a safe now the right of way, now we remove, and then so probably that could be the difference.
Some of the people I say they are not informed, or some of them get documents, we then believe see with the documents, we then get from certain government institution. They give them the right for let them get a space and do them business, now that eh, and they.
Alright, so eh, eh, now address issue of information, and it very cute eh, somebody mentions eh, from twenty twenty-three, we don't send letter to them. I don't know which other information, whether posting one, if we take out the time, we left, oh, busy shadow, we write letter to you, say you not supposed for there, and I don't know which other information you give me the one. But over and above that, like I be don't state earlier on, at every given opportunity, when it's a rose authority personnel, they not a radio station, or the television station, or the eh address, any eh media or group, we always, because this like, this like, this is one of the biggest threats to the roads eh, encroachment of the right of way, so we are always talking about it, and even before we people they go now modern under, we they, to we cap as low as having megaphones. Then they announce eh, waistline, they can't pull now, so now pull now goods and eh, then I mean, that's the thing, so we do eh eh inform them. The next thing is eh, we no able write everybody letter. Some people they eh, they go there, they go come on there, you can't there, if you want can deliver letter, they not there, maybe post, no go hold up. But the fact means that, when they be the candy, we not ever approve the day one day. That's illegally, so there's no go babysit there any further, right? Eh, I read they say people they collapse, I mean, we no have any evidence of any collapse, so we just hospital, I think they just want me to be sensational. Eh, we say now the rose authority, where they big Papa government, Papa government support we, for ladies here succeed.
Yes, so eh, any plans for engage them people there, maybe now give them chance for return back, or no, we not there.
For return? No, 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 no. Any say we don't pull you, eh, now different thing we do there. However, however, we also aware of the needs of the people in now this country. So, we could eh, but that was something we go for sit on, implant, and even do designs eh of wait to one day. For example, for one chaos, who say maybe they sell top up, oh, no say this is some people that we need, or you know, some of the result. But I mean, it has to be systematic, not to somebody, they can't bring four stick, put out, they got weeks or kind, dotill up, put out, where busy guy, they go and fly, 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 now Kiamaronia, that's not the sort of things that we want.
Alright.
Right, so somebody might come back, but it has to be in an organized and well-designed fashion.
Okay, um, away from then, together then they, then we can to um, some of the road project and bridge. Um, let me look at Fritown to be specific, within the Hapudi Grammar School Road, because up to now, we see I not done it, done by the roundabout for.
Exactly, Grammar School Road don't don't long long time, if I would done, you would before they even match.
Is it now from the junction to the school, or not from, or not around, or not the.
So the road, the road they refer to currently now, now the Moritown Road. Eh, of course, the Grammar School Road, the Moritown Road, and eh, the Leicester Road, from eh Berry Street to Leicester. They all, we don't repackage, I didn't say one package, we, we don't reassign them to another contractor. In fact, immediately after they reassigning, eh, now that contractor, they make lot of progress, complete Grammar School Road, start for do the high road street, now the Moritown Road, eh, from the roundabout, they can't, here before, we even up prime, you know, we do eh, base calls, we prime them on onto the market, and then the drainage works, and if you go there, they say very evident, they also start for do that one day. But then you know, this now really season, so normally, we can scale that, we walk there. But the ultimate is eh, it will be done, once we get eh clear weathers, informed.
In line with the other aspect of on our mandate, we get for do it to road and bridge them, when I get a first starting point, when a road project bidding, we can involve contractor them for present a proposal before they award any project for make a road or a bridge, take we listen and hear them through. How that process they can go, and how transparent it be, because if you not get a right here now, the end work of the road project, and they will show the result, for see this our own contractor, they give this project.
Right, so eh, so firstly, we, we get we, we prioritize eh, because eh, there's nowhere in the world where you get enough funding, for me you able meet all you needs eh. So we prioritize, we look at the roads eh, we get hierarchy of roads eh, I mean, of course, if bridges fall along eh, that could be part of the package. And then, we prepare them projects eh, we can do feasibility studies, you know, as the case may be, if a major road project eh, we do eh engineering designs eh. Then we get conservative estimates eh, we cost them, we give an indication of which in that it will be, that we call the engineers estimate. It for be kind of eh, like kind of a secret, kind of. So with that, eh, we also try for secure funding. For example, if they development partner they fund them, we approach them, we get, we get a lot of discussions around them, until they finally approve that funding. If they are going to share in the fund them, the same process, we engage them, until they allocate funding. So when we are sure of the funding, or at least we don't get a commitment for funding, then we can go to procurement. Eh, we go to the called tender, tender dose eh, that would eh like plan basically eh, for example, the blank bill of quantities, we put inside it eh, the the conditions of a contract, I mean, eventually if you win eh, so if we get an idea of waiting at now your obligations eh, and wait now the declines, when are we, we your obligations eh. They will put out the public domain, most times you can sell them, bid eh, they are very minimal prices, then contractors are we interested in them, they can come now and, you know, eh submit the bids eh, then they quota, quota waiting, they fixing eh, for do for that work. Then, they also put inside, we get administrative pattern, technical pattern, you would, you would make, we know say, you company registered, you know, those are statutory issues eh. And then, the technical part, you also go for me, you know say, you get the technical capacity, you get the equipment, you know, you get the manpower, we get the eh skills, and so forth and so on. Then, after submission, we evaluate the all, eh, we de look at this man say, he get this machine, he get this, he get this, we look at this. So at the end of the day, the most responsive person will be, or contractor will be, the one will fix eh, you were satisfied, we don't properly satisfy then, different categories there. Now we design the contract with, and then eh, works could begin, so that's how we do it.
So add to it, me call presenter acts about Fritown Road Project, and mention Grammar School, aside Grammar School. Also that road project where they go on at the capital city Fritown, we goes in a, who not responsible for eh, in terms of funding and other thing then.
So eh, if you watch, for example, I don't know who say you call Fritown, who say you limit Fritown, but we, we, we are doing roads now.
The capital city.
Yeah, well, yes, fine, we are doing roads now in joint area, right, joint area we do there. In fact, eh, from the joint junction to Fishery's, so about two point seven kilometers eh road, we don't almost complete that, and they will pave them, you know. Eh, even they will also try to connect Hastings through the old road onto eh Cosotown area. In fact, in between they would, we did a very good bridge eh, right, and then eh, now the far west eh, we, we currently they also work on the Adunkia area. Yes, we try to connect from Adunkia table, be and you, these are new settlements that we be done opening long ago, but then they ever not get access, proper access in terms of roads. So we are also working around there, eh, we don't do lot of work around the Babaduri area, you know, so these are some of the eh things that we did not Fritown area.
Then, but there would project I mentioned, is this a government funded or donor partner?
All of them are due SL funded, Government Australian funded, yeah.
Before go for break, um, what are the relationship between on a and road maintenance fund? Because if you check, plenty people now comes on our Facebook page about the portal, now Fritown.
Right, so road maintenance fund, as it name implies, now then they collect the money from fear levies eh, then add then they administer to we. So it means for maintenance, basically. So when we want do maintenance work, we prepare our handwork program, we submit it to them, we see the way, then we discuss them. We discuss them, because then we will know the, the funding level, then they go advise we eh, how much money go there, or probably they can even give you a ceiling based on the eh eh forecast there. Then, we prepare a budget, we agree on what we go do this year, we approve them, and then, then they give you the money from time to time, and based upon request for law, do they work there. Eh, about the concerns for the portals, you know, eh, I agree, they are portals. But I also want let people there attest eh, over the years, the level of portal, the way they be see, that's not what they are seeing now. So, and you know, then road problems there, then so much, we only try for see how best we will eliminate it all. Eventually, we will able for do one, and make a eh break this out. Eh, with respect to the portal, we don't even try for change the strategy, maybe in about two weeks or three weeks, the public can't see with new strategy. But I go, I will get a snippet of from now here now, what we don't do, we don't divide the country generally into four parts. The western area will divided into two parts, then starting from Mashaka, they go now the, the not, not east and not west, now another part. Then starting from Mashaka, they go eh, now the south and the southeast, that's another part. So what we don't do, we are introducing a new type of contract management, who call it performance based. So, we de send a contract with eh, a contractor, say this part, therefore part there, I don't mention, like anyone, you, they handle them part there for the next three years, like up to twenty twenty-seven or twenty twenty-eight eh, we de, at the beginning, we de give you, we don't, we de, we don't examine everything. We de give you money for patch all the portals there. Thereafter, we de only pay you based on your performance. For example, we de give you a performance indicator eh, if portal develop, enough will take past one week, if it be, if it be, if it be filled. So if you portal develop, it pass one week, the fee was supposed to pay you, we start for the, the doctor. And if you feel say maybe that fee there is small, is small, every month or a doctor, every quarter or a doctor is small, then you continue to become negligent. By a specific period, three months, four months, we cancel that projected.
Alright.
Then we hand that over probably to the next person, maybe they in line. So that's the approach, so by that way they will feel say, we not need for the wait, tell them what the portals they don't come, because it will be very difficult for we. Now, rose authority, for example, for good eh, you know, mobilize for go eh, patch one, two, three, four portals eh. So, so this is sort of strategy you will get for use, but go on, who go eh unveil them, maybe in a couple of weeks.
We just take a lot of material them, but again, people concern for some bridge them now Fritown, especially we get for do it. I think Tembetong, you know, um, Kongotong Bridge, especially for Kongotong Bridge, as we indicate, the bridge the overflow, on our, on our aware of that.
Yes, of course, eh, in fact, all of the bridges now Fritown, you know, we'll assess them, and from time to time, we'll monitor them, so know exactly with the situation with them. Eh, the Tembetong Bridge, eh, the Uri Line Bridge, the King Tong Bridge, eh, and of course, even the, the Kongotong one we mentioned, they are need they all, we don't watch them, get designs for them. Eh, I mean, you go good, follow, do them eh, before anything disastrous happen. Eh, but however, then bridge eh, especially the Tembetong one, where they always talk about, eh, you know, really they in any bad states, not to death trap. Conadu water, yeah, they always use, not to death trap, it would all assure people then severely eh, say not to death trap. In fact, quite recently, one Motoka go ban that area eh, we currently they try for eh do maintenance on that one, it's September, the end of this week, we don't do. It back, it hits the railings, yes, we don't, we don't do that. We de, we de constantly monitor them, and we de constantly approach government, follow see, love him for put funds together for eh, eh do them, redo them, like how we do the service street bridge. But currently eh, I mean, when you mention bridges, we also involve in some bridge works, now the Fritown area eh, Old School Bridge. Now be one bridge where we don't get problem, we get the contractor to play there now, where they do that construction works, they probably next two or three months will go eh, advance that one day. Similarly, now Lucas in the Far East eh, at some point, the wing wall been collapsed, we also involve in that other one day. Eh, we get two other major bridges in the country, who we pay attention to.
Wait, about Uri Line Bridge, now one who we see the previous DG, we don't go do study the the bridge, we don't crack, where they make people in a arguing, Uri Line, they might send journey is concerned say, for them, then things in a dead trap, if they continue for use the bridge, and measures are not put in place.
I don't tell you, I say, I don't tell you, I say, no, this structure is not to death trap.
So the cracking of them mean anything?
So no physical, no eh structural crack, no be identified, waiting happy at that time, yeah, too, we be come back to the people then eh, especially with happy. Now, around the expansion joint area, you know, most of the bridges are all done done, follow get the uniformity of the material, we de like put tar on top them, bitumen, we put on top them. So who say then expansion joints, they they will allow for movement of the bridge eh, you know, then it open and lock based on the temperature. So eventually eh, the coattawo there, and then eh, the bitumen eh, it can, you know, it can, it can, it can dorm. So then, once people see that, you know, opening eh, they feel say, oh, now death trap, no death trap, not there.
Engineer, the one that take better, I'll be railing them some not in order again, we make if you de pass eh, then decide when are their footpath. You de see the pavement where they give you, the scissors don't fall apart.
So that's what I'm telling you, about the Tembetong Bridge, currently, as at the top, we de, we in states then eh, releasing eh.
Okay.
We observe all of those, yes. Eh, of course, the bridge don't age, so obviously, you know, we posting the old, so tell you, can I hear, no go grow. So small, small, small problems are with eh, but these are issue who they address, and the most appropriate one will eventually be for reconstruct them.
Inside the program this um morning, we de take few messages, and this one from Mystic Nado Azak, he say, many Sierra Leonean are deeply dismayed by the actions of SLR dismantling the structure of hardworking traders under the um guise, guise of rights of way. Livelihood are being destroyed without empathy or alternative. This is not government, it is injustice.
This other message from Justice Mo Samba, they say, only in a country Sierra Leone, authorities want to remove people from an unsafe environment, citizens feel victimized. Noted that the people have to do their trading for survival, but don't ignore safety for survival at the same time.
This one say, engineer, how many bridge them on I don't make from twenty eighteen to now, and how many kilometer of road?
This is a sentiment and unnecessary appeal for people to doing the wrong thing, it's why we are still in, in the backward situation. There are no residential or private areas in Sierra Leone, all say people don't put market for sale in the name of livelihood.
Ah, the last one I got it because of time, this one say, thanks radio democracy for investigation into you building. These are some of the things that happen around different government building across the country.
This one on the you building story from Mystic Nado Azak, they say the uncontrolled movement and happenings at you building are normal practice. The Ministry of Works should do the needful by ensuring they maintain order in such a public facility. Well, the message, and they would come over to the studio guest for respond, over to you, engineer, Mamodu, please.
Alright, so eh, in fact, the first, the second message can interact the first one. The first person, basically, I know say we don't go and based on eh, eh personal and, you know, eh selfish grievance, eh, say they did it for the livelihood. I mean, if you fail your livelihood, eh, should it endanger the rest of other people, their livelihood? Because people they also, they were in workah, for me they go fail the livelihood, must they be hit by vehicles, or eh, keke, or okada, so that they completely they are at dangerous and they out of the way. Eh, no justification or day for make you go dayna streets. Now the wrong place, that inappropriate place for fail livelihood. Eh, otherwise, we follow go put the, eh, eh, one, now inside the ruley under, for low fail livelihood, where they work there. So no justification or day for that. Eh, about how many, how many bridges we don't do from twenty eighteen eh, and the length of road, eh, I know they answer this question, because eh, wherever this person they come from, the chief minister, we don't adequately address this, and I want many person really ask this question, I know say the chief minister, now a very methodical man eh, he de gather in data, and we, that information, you know, provide them for them, so may, may reference and back.
But maybe in charge, if you there, you can confirm that.
Oh, I don't confirm that, I start getting information.
Okay.
Yeah, it's confirmed. Eh, eh, of course, eh, I mean, the last message also just reiterate, the reason why we forget rid of the people there. No residential area, no specific market area, noise all over the place, bars and all over the place. I hope see the other authorities, they where they in charge of that, they that he will help we all, no get, eh, no make this country into a safer place. But just before I left, again, I de sent out this notice, we next stop, we next cycle, we de take them from eh, Dua Zak Farm. In fact, I mean, Dua Zak Junction, if I had Dua Zak area eh, we get letter from repeated the people eh, they they all do, they say, oh, good, I'm not go pull eh.
This all in England, will you?
Yes, this way, I, 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 I may show them a letter, eh, we don't have read that, but look, we get a letter, boss, they ask we, he say make go pull eh, they quick, 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 quick. So we can the Dua Zak, Dua Zak Junction and Dua Zak Farm, you know, this is a place who say.
They love farm then they know, that justice then they did.
I talk about, now the home of justice.
But has been misused or go out of the way for a long time, you can say change go possible.
So it's, you know, ever late, follow, make the place fine. So we can Dua Zak Farm now, next stop, the other side will be eh, Saint Mary's, opposite Saint Mary's, we de pull in there eh, that all we can. Then the third side eh, for next cycle, will be. Then the third side, uh, for next cycle, will be Bottom Mango area, also they pull in there, when actually. Uh, well, maybe after a month or so, we call one, so they did this game, for law, we refer to that, they who they pull in, they can't leave. The gun finally, now on the peninsula road, we get a, who say people that don't go between, uh, uh, how they call it, uh, Laka and Hamilton, people that don't build at the sidewalk, uh, they kitchen, they auto the drilling, they power now, they, they carriage you there, the pool see chairs and see now, and they keep coming, we are coming for them.
Uh, it's plenty thank we join inside the program, engineer, in name of engineer Alfred Jaleel Mamodu, and I the director general for the Salon Roads Authority. I mean, they are for talk about, um, different road projects and self-concern them, where people get, um, concerned in the, um, exercise, we take of this bentem, we are in, I don't book, um, some Bafada, we did not the right of, we plenty thank we join inside the program this morning.